If everyone could please take your seats and we'll get started in just a moment. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for November 1st, 2022. We will call this meeting to order and ask the Vice Mayor to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If we could have Reverend Larry Foltz of Arizona Interfaith Movement, please come down to the podium. Good evening, Reverend.
Good evening. Need to tell you that I am not a resident of Gilbert. This is okay. I am a member of the Arizona Interfaith Movement and I live in Cave Creek, Arizona. And I was reminded tonight how far it is from Cave Creek to Gilbert, but I'm grateful to be here. I remember with great fondness the first time Gilbert came on my radar is when I met one of your former mayors when he was still mayor, John Lewis. And ever since then, Gilbert's, I've been a fan of Gilbert, Arizona. Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege that is ours to be here tonight. And like so many places of the world, we are free to assemble to conduct the business of our affairs and we thank you for that privilege. Tonight, we pray for the mayor, the vice mayor, our council members, all the constituents of the town of Gilbert. Together, they are able to make Gilbert the best that it can be. We remember, Father, our first responders tonight, those men and women, fire department and the police department who keep us safe. Keep them out of harm's way as they go about their business keeping us safe. Remember our schools tonight, administrators, the teachers, the students. Keep these schools safe. And it be a place where students can study without fear, teachers can teach without fear, administrators can administer without fear. I pray, Father, for our churches, the churches of the town of Gilbert. Pray that they will be prosperous and vibrant in their message of hope and faith and love and peace. Tonight, we realize there may be decisions made that'll be different from what we think ought to be made. Help us to conduct ourselves in the way in which our faiths teach us that we treat one another as we would like to be treated, with dignity, with respect, with justice and love and kindness. Help us to remember those people like us, who had differences of opinion yet stood side by side, hand to hand, and fought on the great battlefields of our world so that we could be here tonight. We thank you for those men and women. We salute them. And so tonight, after this is all done, we pray that the town of Gilbert will be a safer place, a more prosperous place, a more peaceful place, and a place where spiritual integrity is always at its best. These things we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you for that lovely invocation, Reverend. Thank you for your drive down here to Gilbert this evening. We appreciate you being part of our faith community that's willing to come out and do an invocation on our behalf. Now, if we could please have a roll call by the deputy town clerk.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Yentes.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
And Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you so much, Judy. Now, I'd like to ask Erin Fazel and Carmelita Nichols to please come down and join me at the front of the room. If I could ask Erin Fazel and Carmelita Nichols to please join me at the front of the room. So our intent this evening was to present this certificate to One Small Step on behalf of the Green Gilbert Business Partner Program, but unfortunately, the representative couldn't be here this evening. So I asked Erin and Carmelita if they would come down and explain what the program is because we'd like to get more businesses involved in that.
Hi, I'm Carmelita Nichols. I work at the town of Gilbert in our environmental compliance division. I am the coordinator for environmental compliance. Green Gilbert Business Partner Program is a program that was developed so that we can give local businesses the opportunity to be able to show that they care about our environment. It's a collaboration between our wastewater, environmental compliance, water conservation, and environmental services teams, and we help them to focus on pollution prevention, waste reduction, and water conservation.
Hi, I'm Erin Fazel. I am the coordinator for the Green Gilbert Program as well as the education outreach specialist for the Environmental Compliance Office. Just a little bit more about the program. It is a program that is designed to be virtually no cost to the business involved. It's really designed to highlight everything that, every effort that they make put forth in order to show that they really do care about the environment and care about our community and care about keeping our town beautiful. We highly encourage every business out there to try and get involved in this program. It's very easy and all information, any additional information for it can be found on the Town of Gilbert's website, as well as how to apply for membership within the program. We actually just reintroduce a new tiered system in the program as well, so those that really show that they go above and beyond can reach additional levels within the program. And we are very proud of where this program is going to take us.
Thank you, Carmelita and Erin. That's Amanda Nobish. She was supposed to be here this evening to receive this recognition on behalf of One Small Step. Amanda gives back to this community quite a bit. She's also on the For Our Town Committee with me. If we could just take a photo, Kirsten? Thank you both. Good work.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. That concludes our presentations and proclamations this evening, and I will pass it over to the Vice Mayor for communications from citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this portion of the agenda, the communications from citizens, we do provide the citizens an opportunity to speak on any issue that was not noticed for the purpose of the printed agenda. Under the provisions of Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items. At the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking the matter be put on a future agenda. The town asks when your name is called, that you come forward and state your name for the record, as well as your place of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds at the discretion of the mayor for any of the speaker's time at the podium. We do have quite a few individuals who filled out cards but indicated they do not wish to speak, so we'll start with those and read the comments into the public record, and then we'll proceed to the individuals who did request to speak. So beginning here with those who did not wish to speak, Wendy Romney, as a Gilbert and Elliott Groves resident, very against the ranch. Brian Romney, as a Gilbert resident, Elliott Groves, I am opposed to the rezoning motion. Luke Kilpak, against the ranch. I pass by this intersection every day. It is already busy and it is not safe. This is not belong by a family neighborhood. Allison Law, I am opposed to the ranch. This doesn't belong in our neighborhood and doesn't maintain consistency with the character plan of Morrison Ranch. Daniel Law, I'm appalled and outraged that this is being considered. This development does not belong in Morrison Ranch. Gilbert used to be a town. Jenna Kilpak, I am against the ranch project for many reasons. When we bought our home, it was not rezoned for this. It was dramatically, it will dramatically increase traffic at an already dangerous intersection, increase pollution hazardous industrial byproducts next to a family community. So many trucks, it is a safety issue. We live in a town, keep it that way. Would you approve this if it was next to your home? You were elected to reps up the people. This is not what the people want. Please do not have this in our community. Eric Gunderson, the ranch, I am opposed to this change of the master plan. Jamie Gunderson, the ranch, I am opposed to the project. An excellent quality of life is what a lot of you say you want for Gilbert residents. This project will definitely not provide that for the residents of Morrison Ranch. Richard Fife, I do not want an industrial complex put in at Power and Wrecker, the ranch. Carly Fife, I'm against the building of the ranch project. Karen Mountford, I don't appreciate the idea of rezoning change after we already bought our homes. Feels like we are being sold out to the highest bidder. Would any of you be as anxious to pass this if your home was there? Karen Ardent, the ranch, this rezoning will make Gilbert a non-livable city. We do not need the traffic or pollution. Tom Ardent, the ranch industrial park does not belong next to the residential. It is a safety issue for all the kids in Morrison Ranch. It will also increase the traffic pollution with all the trucks. Lonnie Citizen, no to the ranch. Jackie Kotrell, I'm a resident of the Elliott Groves and I oppose the ranch. The project puts over 90% industrial right next to our homes. This is, there is no buffer, no street to help the transition from homes to industrial. This project is completely out of place and does not belong. CJ Kotrell, I oppose the ranch. This project does not meet so many of the town of Gilbert's goals. This project should not be so close to homes. Brett Armstrong, please send the ranch back to planning for a reeval of the size. Six-story buildings will take away the character of Gilbert. Brent Henningson, I am strongly opposed to the ranch, which is proposed next to Morrison Ranch. Heather Armstrong, concerns of the ranch building size will diminish the character of Gilbert. Send it back for additional studies and evaluation. Rob Jones, anyone with eyes to see, ears to hear, mind to understand, can appreciate this project as currently planned, doesn't belong next to a residential neighborhood and three schools. Todd Stengel, I came to express concerns of the permitting of the ranch on Elliott and Power. I oppose it. And Laurel Tyler Stengel, I'm against the ranch rezoning. It will increase traffic with large trucks and provides no benefit to local residents. Please uphold current plan and zoning. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all your comments and for being attentive to all those. We will move to our speakers who wish to speak, starting with Jim Torgerson, and then we'll have a couple people on deck since it takes a while to file all the way down through our stadium seating. So after Jim, we'll have Sean Monahan, and then we'll have Brian Mosley. And just a reminder to state your name and your place of residence.
Mayor and council, I'm Jim Torgerson. I live in Gilbert. I am standing here because I cannot believe the town is being sued again regarding a free speech issue. I am the only person in this room that has any business talking about court proceedings with signage and free speech. I'm the only person in this room, including your own council, that has ever set foot in a court regarding that and won every single time, including in front of the Arizona Supreme Court. We have a problem. Yes, we have a problem. There's vitriol. There's people that are angry. They don't feel they're being heard. But to sit there and say somebody quietly in the very back of this room, holding a sign is disruptive, is ludicrous. It only adds to the "we don't want to hear from you." I'm glad I've got your attention, Scott. It is ridiculous that we are in a lawsuit when simply I had sent to every one of you the request to reach out. All the man wanted to avoid this was an apology. Some people in this room are just too proud to offer that because they can't admit when they're wrong, and we are in a lawsuit over it. We will lose and we will look stupid again like we did in Reed versus Gilbert. We lost, we looked stupid, and here we are again. I would hope that some of you up there would figure out how to reach out and to stop this kind of behavior, to turn around and realize these people in this room don't feel heard. The people she read don't even feel like speaking because there's nine officers in here that don't exactly give you the warm and fuzzy unless you know them. So let's start rethinking a little bit about these people. And for those of you who are concerned about the vandalism to my home, it has continued. Just the day after I told you about the last one, my front door was completely covered. Yesterday, I drove home, well, Saturday, actually, I drove home to find paint on my house again. So thank you for that. Goodbye.
Good evening. My name is Sean Monahan. I'm a Gilbert resident, Morrison Ranch, 28 years in Gilbert, and actually grew up next to Scott Anderson. Good to see you, Scott. Grew up with his kids. So I wanted to talk tonight about the ranch, and I was able to attend the planning meeting that took place a couple weeks ago. As you know, the commission voted for three to recommend to the council to approve the change to the zoning, as it is currently written. But I do want to note for everybody, I don't know if you were in attendance or got to view it virtually, that the commission pretty much unanimously agreed that it doesn't fit. They all voiced that to one extent or another. So that's something that I think we can all agree on. And I don't envy you, by the way. Thank you for your service, and it's tough. You guys are put in a tough spot, and I think this ranch is just one of those examples where a heavy burden is placed on you and you got to make a decision. And as Mr. Torgerson expressed, you guys are often put in a tough spot. So we do appreciate you guys, and I want to bring up that in business decisions, the most successful business transactions are always a win-win. The ranch as it is currently proposed is a win-lose. Oftentimes, the win-win scenario is not the most obvious one. It takes a little more work. It often takes going back to the drawing board, and it takes a little more patience than grinding it through. I feel like as a commission and as a town council, we probably haven't had the opportunity yet to do that. But I think we can get there, probably not as it's currently proposed, but it will get there. And it was noted at the commission, a planning commission meeting also, that the reason why that area, the property, hasn't been developed yet is because of the zoning. I don't think that's the case because each of the four corners in this intersection, they're all undeveloped. We know that the northwest corner will be developed soon, but as things continue to develop around it, that property will become more and more of a hot item, and it will be developed, and it will be, people will want to grab it. So my thoughts tonight are that we're going to get there. It's going to take more work and it's going to take a little more patience, but I'd like to see the council make this into a win-win situation. I think we'll get there. Thanks so much.
After Brian, we'll have Shanna Mosley and then Linda Rawls.
Hello, I'm Brian Mosley, resident of Gilbert and Morrison Ranch, and I wanted to thank those of you who've met with me or agreed to meet with me. I'd like to meet with the rest of you to talk this through. Start again with a story, this time a true one, a couple quotes from our meeting with the planning commission. "The only way that you can get what you want is to buy it yourself and develop it." And then from another commissioner, "Many people said, 'This is not what the developer told us when we bought our house.'" I would say this is probably something that happens to everybody. At some point in their life, once they hit 50, they bought something, their developer lied to them. That sucks. And then, you know, as was just said, although there seemed to be unanimous agreement that this could be improved, they didn't feel the need to instruct the developer to do You know, I'm not surprised that a developer is wanting to do it in this way, and I don't hold anything against somebody, you know, from another state, a developer from another state, and money from another state trying to make the most money they can on the project. And I'm not surprised by the landlord. Somebody offered me tens, hundreds, million dollars for a property, it's hard to say what I wouldn't be willing to do for that. But the thing that surprises and disappoints me, and I think all of us, is that we don't see this as something that the developers alone are doing to us, but that is what our town is doing to us and allowing. And that when we look at a, when we look at a general plan, we look at Morrison Ranch as being a development agreement that was, that has been going on for 25 years, where all the owners of these lands signed with the town, agreed to do these things in a certain way to develop the area, we put it into the general plan, we put it into a character area, we say all these objectives and things we want to do, and, you know, someone comes along with money and says they want to build something else, and we're just steaming forward as if that's okay. And like I say, yeah, developers might lie to us, but the town should follow through. The town should support the general plan and those things that are in it. You know, if not, you know, how far, why do we have a plan at all? Or if we're just going to develop, if we're going to approve everything? Whereas one of the commissioners said, if you're going to approve, if you'd approve, even if someone came in and said they wanted to put all general industrial right next to our homes, that we could, that that could have happened too, and like that would get approved too. And that's, I mean, I say this is the worst thing that could happen because I think this is the worst possible thing that anyone would potentially approve, not because it's like the craziest, you know, thing in the world like that, but, you know, just including, you know, if somebody asked, you know, "What are we doing here?" And I understand that the commission wants to be done with it and moving along since it's your decision ultimately. You know, they said, "Are we just delaying the inevitable?" Again, we, as homeowners and as neighbors, we're not trying to just delay the inevitable. We're not trying to cancel all development, cancel any version of this plan. We just want someone to tell the developers that the current version really needs to be changed because until somebody does, and the planning commission and the planning department hasn't told them that, they won't make any changes. And the onus shouldn't be on us, as homeowners, to justify all the objectives of the general plan and why those make sense next to us. The onus should be on the developers to explain how they're going to comply with those and how those things meet those. Thank you.
Shanna Mosley and then Linda, sorry, Linda.
My name is Shanna Mosley. I'm a resident of Gilbert and I live in Elliott Groves, just four homes down from the proposed ranch project. This is not what I do, this is what my husband does, but I felt compelled to come talk this time. This week, as I was talking with my kids, I have four kids, I was talking to them about gratitude. Every November, we talk about things we're grateful for, and we spend every day, each time at dinner, talking about what are we grateful for. I think that gratitude is a really important thing to instill in our children and in our own lives, to help us to see the positive. Anyway, as we were talking about this this week, I challenged them to think about things they're grateful for each day. And as we sat around the dinner table tonight, we shared our ideas, and I just want to share some of the things my kids told me, which prompted me to start writing this as I, as we drove over here tonight. One of my children said, "I'm thankful that we have a nice home to live in." Another said, "I'm thankful I have such nice neighbor friends to play with out front." Another said, "I'm grateful we live in a safe place." And my 17-year-old son, who's a typical teenager, said he was thankful for food. With the exception of my 17-year-old's response, the things my kids are most grateful for will be taken from them if this ranch project and the rezone go through as currently planned. Noise, traffic, and trucks will cause their quality of life that they enjoy and their safety to deteriorate. They will lose neighbors and friends, some of them who have already put their homes up for sale, to move away from the fear that, of the potential issues that the ranch will cause. That's why I'm here. I am grateful I live in a country where I have the freedom to stand up for what I believe and for what I feel is right. Tonight, you will hear from more neighbors and friends who will list their concerns, and I urge you to listen to them. I know we've been talking to you for a long time, but there's a lot of families with real concerns about what's going to happen to our homes and to our livelihoods. We've tried to work with the developer. We've reached out. My husband's met with them multiple times, asking them to please make changes, but they aren't willing to listen. They won't work with us unless you tell them they have to. And we want to come up with a plan that is reasonable for all of us, something that we can be grateful for. So I ask you to please protect my family and the home that I've worked so hard to give my children. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanna. Thank you for your heartfelt email, too. Linda? And then after Linda, we'll have Kevin Marvin.
You know, every time I come here and I listen to the terrible things that you're doing to the people in the community, I go home and it makes me think. My brain's beginning to hurt from thinking about how terrible all of you are. And you know what? This time, I was thinking how AOC kept Amazon from going to New York. And I'm telling you up there, all we have to do is start calling the companies that they're trying to bring here and tell them, "We don't want them here." Companies don't want to be in a place where they're not wanted. So you know what? That is the only thing I could come up, was a plan to just start calling these companies and saying, "We don't want you here. We're going to fight you. Go someplace else." So I really think that you should consider rezoning because if we can get enough people behind us to call these companies and tell them, "No, we don't want you here. You find someplace else to go," nobody will want to come to Gilbert. So I'm just telling you now that this is my plan. I will try to get, and I'm here, all the people that live there. I think that you'd all be willing to do that. Just call them up and say, "No, we don't want you in our backyard. We will protest. We will sue you. We will do whatever we can to keep you from coming here."
If you could address the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, you know, so I'm just saying, you need to consider rezoning because I'm ready to start calling that company now and telling them, "No, do not come here. We don't want you here." And hopefully, these companies will say, "We don't want to be someplace we're not wanted, just like Amazon, and go find someplace else to go." And Scott, you lived in Morrison Ranch. How could you look at yourself in the face knowing that you're approving this when it's your, it's where you grew up. It's the people that you know. That is just so shameful, Scott. How do you look at yourself in the morning, knowing what you do to your friends and the family that grew up and lived there?
Linda?
That's just terrible.
Can I respond to that?
You can't respond until after all the speakers are finished. Yeah, the council will have an opportunity to, after the, after the communications from citizens concludes.
Okay, so he's going to, I get to respond? Okay, so he's going to, I get to respond back?
Ma'am, he's not allowed to respond until after all the people have spoken during communications from citizens, during state law. Thank you.
We're going to go to our next speaker, Kevin Marvin, and then Stephanie Evans. And then after Stephanie, we'll have Daniel Payton. Name and residence for the record. Sorry, just a reminder.
Is that agreed now? Okay. So I'm Kevin Marvin. I live in Elliott Grove. I spoke with you about a month ago. If you walk out in the parking lot and you looked at my license plate, you would see that my license plate is Matthew 2239, which is about loving your neighbor as yourself. And that includes all of us. I love all of you. As a Christian, that's what I'm to do. And I will do that to my best of ability with God's help. I'm up here for my neighbors, and I live there, right? Like, I'm passionate about it as well. But I'm here for my neighbors, especially the ones who live right up against it. And I'm also here because I watched this surreal voting at the Planning Commission that I don't understand. They literally all, the ones that spoke said it doesn't make sense. Three of them voted it down, but they couldn't get a second for trying to vote it down. So that was bizarre. And then they canceled the continuance. And then Adam Vaughn got up and said, "Hey, if you tell us to go work on it, we will go work on it." And they didn't do it. I just don't understand that at all. The developer's leader was saying, "Hey, tell us what you want us to do, and we'll go work on that." But they didn't do it. Now, one of the commissioners did talk about muting the noise. And I forget his last name. I think it's Vaughn. But he talked about muting the noise. We're not noise. We're people. You're coming into our backyard and stealing money from us. Every house there averages like maybe $750,000. And you're literally devaluing all those houses to do something that's totally different from the plan. I just can't fathom doing that. Why can't we work together on this? Why can't we come up with something that we're all behind? There has to be a way. The fact that they were given that opportunity and turned it down, it was the most bizarre thing ever. I mean, something like that should go viral. I just don't understand it. And I remember, Mr. Anderson, last time I did ask you, and I asked each of you to look yourself in the mirror when you vote, and I'll be asking you that in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Stephanie? And then after Daniel, we'll have Ryan Handelsman, and then Brandon Riff.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Evans. I'm a Gilbert resident and live in the Morrison Ranch, Elliott Grove subdivision, subdivision. I feel more safe typing things out, but I didn't tonight. I kind of thought I'd go off script a little. As I was driving here, I was thinking about the weekend, sorry, the weekend that I just had with my kids. We took them to New York where the first two were born. And, sorry, I'm going off very little sleep. Anyway, it was so interesting to drive around where we used to live and to show them the city and our neighborhood. And just driving here tonight, it just came to my mind, thinking about how much that meant to me, being able to show them where they came from, where they were born. And also, just even driving around downtown Buffalo and showing them the buildings, the architecture, and it stuck out to me how little had changed. We moved over 10 years ago. Everything looked the same. The government buildings in downtown are stately. The architecture is beautiful. Our neighborhood is a sweet neighborhood. The churches, they last, right? Buildings last. And the enduring nature of architecture of buildings, it really does impact a community. And I know that your decisions can't be based purely off of looks and the feel that you get, but I do feel like there is something to that and why we chose to live here. Some frustrating things about the Planning Commission meeting a couple weeks ago. Commissioner Munt responded that many of our arguments were hyperbolic. And we don't have a lot of concretes right now. These industrial buildings, we have some general outlines, but, I mean, we have a traffic study, but can there be a noise study? We don't know exactly what companies are going to come here. All we know is the size that we're dealing with and the potential for the intensity of use, for the docks, for the traffic, for the pollution, for the fact that we're concerned about what could be manufactured there. Those sorts of things may seem hyperbolic, but they are real concerns. And I feel they really do impact our property rights as being the original owners here, the homeowners in this area. Now, if this was going to be put in first, and we chose to come build our homes after, that's one thing. But we came here and built our lives here, and now this is coming in. And we're just asking, as others have stated, for more of a transition. We just need, if you can just have the developers give us some more boundaries, some more of a transition to buffer that noise pollution, the intensity of use, this would mean so much to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Daniel Payton?
Hello, I'm Daniel Payton. I live in Morrison Ranch. I'm here today to express opposition to the ranch project. The ranch is arguably going to be the most dense and intense proposal that ever comes before this council. It is truly astonishing how dense it is. Every square foot that can be developed is receiving a massive concrete tilt-up building in the current proposal. Almost 900 truck bays in the current proposal, and it's going to be one of the biggest industrial complexes in the state of Arizona. So when we say intensity and denseness, this kind of sets the bar. I believe that the residents and the developer were starting down a path to create a solution that all parties could live with, and that would drastically reduce any of the antipathy that is currently in place with this project. I also believe that more resident coordination in time with this project could get to an acceptable place for all parties. Like the gentleman said earlier, there is a win-win solution. No one's come up here and said, "We don't want anything built. We want a cornfield for the next 50 years." That's not what any of us want. And I don't think anyone's come up here and said, "I'm totally anti-industrial." They're willing to take industrial, we're willing to take these things. We just think a little more work needs to occur on the western edge of the property. As part of the application process, the applicant must demonstrate substantial conformance to the general plan. As you have heard from several residents, and you saw a 26-page document written by a resident explaining exactly how this doesn't conform to the general plan, in our opinion, it doesn't remotely conform. I'd like to take a minute to just discuss the self-imposed hindrance that this landowner Dale Morrison has created with the property. So we hear from the applicant that this land has been zoned this way since 2009 and has failed to attract a buyer. We also hear from the applicant that the landowner is only willing to sell all 302 acres in a single transaction. Interestingly enough, the applicant's general plan narrative related to why the current zoning is unsuitable has recently changed to make it appear that the property owner and the proposed development are not the causes of the hindrance. The first one shows clearly that the project and the owner are the cause of their own hindrance. The use of the land for the last 13 years has been predominantly a feedlot. That feedlot is to feed the dairy farm the family owns. It's 2,500 feet away. It's got 6,500 cows. That dairy farm has recently ceased operations in June of 2022, and it sold in September 2022 to coincidentally become an approximately 4 million square foot industrial complex. So this landowner has created their own hindrance. And I'd like to leave you guys with an analogy. If I'm going to sell my house, and I tell you I will only sell my house if I can sell my house, my two cars, my two dogs, and my time share to a single buyer, would any of you feel bad for me if I can't sell my house for 10 years? Now, if I go to the Planning Commission and I say, "Hey, my house can't get any traction as a residential development. I want to rezone it to a batch plant. They're building all these industrial buildings right here. The demand for concrete has never been higher." Would you approve that? Absolutely not. Thank you for your time.
Ryan, then Brandon, and then after Brandon, we'll have Nikki Reber.
Ryan Handelsman, Gilbert, Arizona. Back around 2005 to 2010, a real estate investor attempted to read and interpret the direction of a market and bought up various lands across Arizona and California. This investor leveraged the Dallas Police and Fire Pension Fund to help finance the purchases. The investment turned out to be a bad decision. Ultimately, that investor filed for bankruptcy personally and abandoned the pension fund to the tune of $200 million, which also apparently prompted an FBI investigation. In 2008, the IRS hit this investor with a lien for more than $2.5 million in unpaid income tax, and also lost two homes to foreclosure. In 2010, 2011, one of them being for a mansion that had over $5.9 million of unpaid debt. In 2015, this investor faced a lawsuit surrounding another real estate deal gone bad, in which they were ordered to pay out a sum totaling $3.8 million in compensatory and punitive damages. Since then, the investor has yet to keep a company afloat for what looks to be more than two years. But that didn't stop them from going on a podcast and admitting that they helped their mentor cheat on taxes from a commission of a real estate sale. And you're probably wondering why I'm bringing all this up. And I ask, does this seem like a proud story that the town would like to do business with? And I do ask that because that investor was Mike Sernin, the CEO and newly-formed company Indicap, who, as we all know, is requesting an absurd zoning change based on the speculative, hypothesized, and unproven demand for industrial facilities in the area. A demand so high that when asked by the Gilbert Planning Commission to maybe name a potentially interested tenant, they were unable to do so. So if you're going to pretend that you don't know about all this, well, now you know. And I'll email it to you, so you have it on record. I think it's just important to look at who and why behind it all, especially since you're voting on a change that ultimately Gilbert is going to be doing business with indirectly. This developer has a proven track record of failure, and he's trying to sell the town on a dream. I don't envy you. This is a decision that is likely to follow your political career forever. So I go back to all of the comments I made about this person and this company's track history and track record. And you have plenty of times have told us, "You back the blue." You say that you're here to represent us and act in the best interests of Gilbert. And we'll see on November 15th. We're not opposed to this land being developed. We want it to be developed, but not like this. It's dirty money, and Gilbert's better than that.
Good evening. No fireworks tonight, guys, so everybody can relax. Listening tonight, I think it's clear people are heartbroken, they're angry, and they're upset. This is where we live, and this is deeply personal for each of us here tonight. I think it's sad that people don't feel that they can come to their elected officials and ask for help. I think we should work to improve that relationship. The proposal is for light industrial to increase from 15 to 95%. This is extreme. We should be balanced and reasonable. People depended on the general plan and made the greatest purchases of their lives based on that information. We should honor that plan, at least to some degree. Now, the Planning Commission just took some quotes from that last meeting, and the Planning Commission members referred to the proposed plan as problematic. They questioned the noise pollution. They voiced issues with its compatibility with the surrounding community. They stated there's weakness in the plan, questioned the amount of light industrial being proposed, stated, "I've struggled with this, and more work can be done." And some even asked, "Does this fit?" Now, the plan keeps changing. We've seen dramatic changes being proposed even as late as last week. And I think we need to slow this down, and we need to really consider and get all the information, and we don't have that. In my profession, patients are made to make an informed decision, and can only make an informed decision if I provide information relating to advantages, disadvantages, risks, alternative, and costs. And I think that applies to the situation where we're making a very permanent decision that's going to affect families for generations. I think we should grant residents the same courtesy and respect that I grant my patients. And with that, I will leave you with a quote. "Do nothing in haste. Look well into each step, and from the beginning, think what might be the end." Thank you.
Nikki, after, Nikki will have Terry Natty, then Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Hi, I'm Nikki Reber, Gilbert, Arizona. Y'all have seen me before. I didn't make the last meeting, maybe not even the one before that, different reasons. But then I got a newspaper in my mailbox, a little Gilbert newspaper, and a journalist was here. And I found out where that train track deal is coming from, from ADOT. Anytime you get mixed up with ADOT, somebody is going to pay, and pay big time. Now, y'all had gotten together and kind of agreed that you would not saddle the people of Gilbert with fees, funds, taxes, or anything else. And then you turned around and you went back on it. You people can't be trusted, any way, shape, or form. A lot of you are going to be leaving come January 1st. Thank God we get some new blood in here that might do the right thing for Gilbert. It's a shame Mayor Peterson, that right now you weren't up for reelection, or we probably got rid of you, too. There's just too many people in Gilbert at that point where they're done. They're just done. And for those of you who are here on this ranch project, this is the first time I'm hearing about what you're complaining about, but it's not the first time I've heard this, being here, just the first time I've heard about yours. And if you think the Planning Commission is your friend, and they're going to help you, you are sadly mistaken, because they're not here to help you. They are here to help the developers and the people who want to sell their land and make a lot of money. So I wish you guys a lot of luck. But I just want you to know that I'm still in that group. We will continue to fight you on that railroad plan if it ever comes through. I sat and watched TV tonight and saw a piece on there where they're doing the freeway work over there on the curve. And $9 million is going on a piece of that project to a company in California. They benefit only because they're getting that $9 million. That piece doesn't benefit a single solitary thing on the project. It's not going to benefit somebody who's walking, driving, nothing. But $9 million is going to that person over in California. That money's not even staying here. And that's what will happen with this railroad deal. If that thing ever goes through, somebody's going to make a huge amount of money on it. And everybody from Tucson to Buckeye will pay a huge price. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Terry Natty. I live in a county island within the Gilbert planning area. I've heard a lot of things tonight. I was going to kind of go in direction, but I'm going to change. I heard win-win situation, grindout and answer, the town should support the general plan. I heard, for lack of a better term, the bastardization that has happened to Gilbert that most of us know and love. It's very frustrating because I have tried to do things the right way. I have emailed. I've had conversations with some of you in person, some of you on email. And I appreciate Councilman Tilke, your one-on-one with me via email. I appreciate Vice Mariyentes, your one-on-one with me in person. I even appreciate Councilman September, who got me in touch with David Fabiano, who is here. What I don't appreciate is the lack of actual movement. It feels like, and I say you all, and I know it's not you personally, but you're here, you're who we can talk to. It feels like... It feels like we give you our reasons, and we give you the support, and we give you the facts, and we give you the statistics, and we give you all of these things that we found that supports our reasons for our emotions. We're not doing...we're not coming to you out of an emotional place. We're coming to you out of a place of logic and reason. And on my project, the Okatia widening, I got, sorry, can't happen. Well, what about this? The blank stare when I brought up things that said, what about this? It was almost as if, oh, well, I had never thought about that. That's how I took that blank stare and the no words that I got from the people in our one-on-one meeting. I was so pissed off and so frustrated. So I really, really hope that you all and the Planning Commission listen to these wonderful people more than you listen to me and my neighbors, because I really felt like I got blown off. So I want to remind you that you work for your constituents. You don't work for staff. You don't work for developers.
Madam Mayor, future colleagues, on January 10th, I will take the oath of office. I will agree to bear allegiance to the town of Gilbert. It does not say I will bear blind allegiance to the town of Gilbert's government or any town official that I feel is disrespecting the people. Being a leader means taking responsibility and apologizing for your actions, whether proven right or wrong. Being a leader also means you hold other leaders accountable. With that said, tonight, I plan on being a leader. I feel the need to call out some things I perceive as BS. I won't call it BS, however. I'll be respectful, so when I want to call out the BS, I'll simply call it hashtag Gilbert kindness to remind us all to be kind to each other. For example, in our recent investigation regarding a potential lawsuit, it was stated that a town council member didn't see signs 70 feet away or knew who was holding those signs before kicking those citizens out of the meeting. That is complete and utter hashtag Gilbert kindness. Being on the council, I remember that a gavel doesn't make anyone powerful, but to fact-check that, I brought my own. I don't feel more powerful today. We get our power from the people, and the people have the right to take it away, which is why council meetings have been so vocal. The people don't feel like they're being heard, and they want to take some of their power back. Now, don't get me wrong, being heard doesn't mean getting in your way. It means knowing another person truly sees your point of view and takes it under consideration before making a decision. Being heard is not walking away to get a Diet Coke when a citizen is walking towards a podium to speak. No apology was ever given. Hashtag Gilbert kindness. Councilmember Anderson earned my respect for apologizing publicly for his actions during the meeting a few months ago. He also spoke about listening to each other and working things out so we don't waste taxpayers' money on ethics complaints and lawsuits. Now, I don't want to hear about people hating people or people targeting people or any witch hunts. If there's enough there to perceive an ethics complaint or a lawsuit, then perception is reality. The latest lawsuit will go away with one simple thing, an apology and $1. Now, I disagree with the defendants in this lawsuit. I think they should have sued for $1.02. $1.02 for a penalty and 2 cents because you didn't respect them enough to listen to their 2 cents in the first place. Now, I don't know the rules. I don't know if six council members can force one council member to apologize. An apology only costs one's pride and not one cent of taxpayers' dollars. The way I see it, a choice needs to be made to save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, because that lawsuit won't be a dollar. Here's the choice. You can swallow your pride, or you can walk away and swallow another Diet Coke. If you make the wrong decision, hashtag Gilbert kindness will always be known as complete and other BS. Thank you for allowing me to utilize my First Amendment rights.
That concludes our communications from citizens. We did receive 36 comment cards that were in opposition to the ranch. I think they were marked public hearing, so they weren't submitted properly, but I think those can be disseminated and put into the record as well. Yes. Thanks. Did Councilman Scott Anderson?
Sorry, thank you. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to respond?
Thank you. Yes, just to clarify, the wonderful Monahan family grew up with my family in a subdivision about five miles away from and before Morrison Ranch even existed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Now, moving on to our consent calendar. Vice Mayor?
Yes, we have one item requested to be polled, item number three, and we will do our mass motion first.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Do we need to refresh our voting?
Yes, Mayor.
Kelsey?
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I remembered this time, Judy.
Okay, so we will move item number 20 up. And if Councilmember Tilke, if you'd like to make the motion on item 20?
Yes. Should I do the whole consent and include it?
Yeah, that will work.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with removing item number three and adding item 20, a motion to appoint the redevelopment commission, TJ Clausen and Bo Bigelow as regular members with terms beginning November 1, 2022, and ending October 31, 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All vote? Councilman Anderson, would you like to address item three?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I asked item three to be presented tonight by our Water Resources Manager, Lauren. Anything that has to do with water, I'm going to make sure that there's a presentation done, because we need to understand as a community the seriousness of what's happening on the Colorado River and the actions that we need to take. And this is one piece of action tonight that I asked Lauren to describe, that the region is taking to address conservation measures that will help us in the region.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lauren Hickson. I'm the Water Resources Manager. So tonight's item, the request is to grant the Public Works Director authority to sign on to the memorandum of understanding by and among Colorado River Basin municipal and public water providers. And this MOU really is an opportunity to showcase the collective efforts in the region to conserve this vital resource. It's a commitment to redouble our efforts to conserve water. It's an opportunity to highlight the water savings that has been achieved in the region and also for Gilbert. Specifically in the MOU, it highlights that since 2000, municipal and public water providers in the basin have decreased annual water use by over 1 million acre feet while adding 5 million people. And specifically just highlighting tonight that Gilbert's conservation efforts have helped reduce per capita potable water demand by over 20% since 1997. So this MOU really does fit into our overall Colorado River shortage strategy, which is to evaluate the potential impacts of additional reductions in the supply and look for innovative and attainable solutions. And those solutions are really in three main categories of operational resiliency, long-term portfolio sustainability, and water conservation and efficiency. And tonight's MOU request is really under that water conservation and efficiency category. So in this MOU, it's a commitment to redouble these efforts, these specific efforts here to expand our programs and best practices, to reduce non-functional, essentially ornamental grass, increase water recycling and reuse, and collaborate with all of the Colorado River Basin users. So we're already doing this in many different ways. We have a very robust conservation program. This is our scorecard from 2021, highlighting the ways that we've conserved water through our existing programs, through our water efficiency checkups, our landscape water budget program, and our new development policies for conservation codes, as well as our efforts in education of the public. In addition to those efforts, we have other policies and programs in place, including our conservation-oriented tiered water rates, our sustainable water allocation policy. We already recycle and reuse 100% of our wastewater through direct use of reclaimed water or through recharge, and we've recently expanded some programs with our recently-launched Smart Irrigation Controller Rebate Program, and that's been online for about five weeks, and we've already approved 35 rebates through that program. And coming in 2023, we're also looking to initiate a turf removal rebate program specifically right now for commercial customers so that we can get used to that program and hopefully expand to residential in the future. So again, it all ties back to our Colorado River shortage strategy. We have implemented stage one of our Water Supply Reduction Management Plan back in June, and so this really fits, this MOU fits right in with that water education and promotion of what we're doing and helping encourage others to continue to conserve this vital and precious resource. So with that, I just would end with the request for the authority to sign on to the MOU and really the support to call...supporting this call to action to all water users in the Colorado River Basin, because together, that's how we're going to address this situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Anything further, Councilmember?
This is a very significant item, because there are major cities, Denver and some other cities in other basin states that have signed on to this already, and that's a major step, because the basin states and the Colorado River are not in much of a mood to cooperate with one another right now. And I believe that this is a major step by signing this MOU, and I'd make a motion to approve the MOU.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All vote? Motion carries unanimously, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will be moving along to our public hearing portion of our agenda at this time. We have three items on our agenda. I did receive a...do you have that sheet? One person via online comment, thank you. Lisa Ballard, who is opposed to item 19. I'll open the public hearing. Lisa Ballard is opposed to item 19. Wanted to make sure that we shared that. I believe we need to...we can hear 17 and 19 together, but I do need to open 18 for the public hearing. I don't have any other slips to speak on any of these three items. Would anyone like to entertain a motion for 17 and 19? I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to have a presentation on 19.
19?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then how about a motion for item number 17, the liquor license?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second? I have a motion and a second. Motion passes unanimously. Now, number 18, open the public hearing, annexation A22-03, and I have Ashley McDonald to do a presentation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. Ashley McDonald, Principal Planner with the Planning Division. I do have a presentation, so I'll just give them a moment to get that loaded before I jump in. It's very short. So this is A2203. It's the Keystone Annexation. The annexation, I thought it would be helpful to run real quick through the process, because town council will be seeing this item again in the future. The annexation process starts with the filing of a blank petition, and that occurred on October 6th. So after the filing of the blank petition, town council is asked to hold a public hearing to receive any input from surrounding property owners. We're not requesting a motion from council tonight. We're just, again, seeking feedback from any surrounding property owners. Once this hearing is held, the applicant can begin collecting signatures from the property owners that are the subject of the annexation. They can begin that 30 days after filing of the blank petition, which will be on November 6th. After that, another hearing will be held where council will consider adoption of the annexation ordinance. And with this particular annexation, we do have a general plan amendment as well as a rezoning application that will be accompanying that. We're anticipating that coming to town council at your December 13th hearing. So this particular site is located on the south side of Warner Road between Power and Wrecker. It's directly off of Sanders Drive, where it will receive access for future development. You can see by the hash pattern on the map, that is County Island, so the full County Island that you can see there will not be annexed as part of this. It's just that 15-acre site. Taking a look at their annexation exhibit, this is just about 15 acres of land. Well, the annexation is 13.99. The rezoning application is slightly larger, because a portion of the roadway has already been annexed. The existing general plan classification on this property is residential, five to eight dwelling units per acre. The property, being under Maricopa County's jurisdiction, has Maricopa County zoning, and that is Airport District 3. That is not consistent with the town of Gilbert general plan and vision for the property. Airport District 3 allows for light industrial type uses, warehousing, some commercial uses, lumberyards are the types of uses that are allowed in Airport District 3. As I mentioned, there is the companion cases that you will be hearing when this does come back, if the applicant successfully receives signatures for the petition for annexation. They will be requesting a land use change from five to eight dwelling units per acre, which is the existing general plan land use designation, and then an increase in density to eight to 14 dwelling units per acre. And then they would request also a rezone from Maricopa County Airport District 3 to multifamily low as part of that. So tonight, we're just seeking public input, and no motion is requested of council. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about this annexation.
Thanks, Ashley. We haven't done an annexation in a long time, and now we have started two recently, right? Yes. Any comments or questions for Ashley? And I don't have any slips for public comments, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 19, making sure the public hearing is still open. If staff would like to come down and give us a short presentation, please.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I am presenting the zoning case for Z2204, the Gabriella Point PAD request. The request is related to a 39-acre site near the corner of Higley Road and Warner Road, so right on the edge of the Morrison Ranch development. It is currently zoned multifamily medium and multifamily low. That zoning has been there for about probably 20 years that has been on that site. And what the request is, the request that's being made, is an allowance to increase height for buildings, a number of buildings from 40 feet to 56 feet within a small defined area, and an accompanying increase in open space required for the multifamily development that will go on this site. development that will go in this, go on this site. Just to really quickly give you a look at the deviations requested, it is, we're looking at the 56-foot height increase, so increase of 16 feet, which I can, will show you where that is being considered in a moment. Maximum number of floors, of four floors, and then an increased setback from Martingale Road, which is currently under construction to the west of the site, and a increase in required open space regardless of any changes that's made to a future design review case. Just to very quickly give a brief on what this case is requesting, what it's not requesting, the proposal is not asking for any increase in the number of total allowed units. That is defined by the general plan category, the density classification, and the zoning, and neither of those are changing with this request. So the total unit count, the density, and any multifamily entitlements, none of that is changing. That's, again, this has been zoned multifamily for a number of years. This is just a look at the proposed development plan. It would be a number of multifamily residential units with the densities for each half of the site given to you there. It's also included in the staff reports that were provided to you. The area, what makes this request interesting is the fact that this site intersects with our vertical development overlay district area number four. This is an area that was developed a number of years ago to accommodate increased height for certain uses, which I've shown you in the table here. So you can actually see that there is a increase in height that's allowed for a number of zoning districts that can extend as high as 105 feet if they meet certain community benefits that are provided to the town. That you will see that multifamily medium is currently not allowed in that area, but it is allowed as a zone that can take advantage of those vertical development zones in other parts of the town. So many of the other areas also allow this zoning district to be used for increased height. So the proposed request is looking at an area that's outlined in red on your screen. It's 1,100 feet from the eastern property line. That's adjacent to single-family residential to the east, and 230 feet from the north. Inside of that existing, inside of that existing vertical overlay area, this is the area where the request is being made to increase building height to 56 feet. So it would only apply to those three buildings that you see in the southwestern portion of the site. What has been done between the applicant and planning staff has been to restrict where that height can be allowed, only in that area, and then a number of other stipulations have been agreed upon as well, including a minimum 40-foot street setback, no exceeding four stories in height, no more than three buildings can use this bonus. So even if the development, the design review were to change the layout of the site, still no more than three buildings could use that height increase. And then there was a requirement for increased direct pedestrian access to open space amenities related with this. So there's those three buildings that you'll see with the vertical development overlay area outlined in yellow. You'll see that they're contained within that, and the buildings must be fully contained in that area. The applicant has provided a graphic that demonstrates the line of sight from neighboring residential uses, and I've circled the buildings that would be increased to four stories and 56 feet in the red circles. And you'll see that the sightline analysis shows that there would be no visual impact on surrounding residential neighborhoods, and planning wrote potential stipulations to ensure that there would not be any effects to surrounding residential areas based on this request. The last note is just on the open space increase. I've provided a graphic that shows the open space areas. The pedestrian connections are in red, and you'll see that this site employs a large number of private open spaces throughout the site, and the goal is to increase that amount of area by moving some of the building area onto essentially these three buildings on the western side of the property to increase the amount of open space that's available for all residents in this development. So that is kind of the, the kind of nexus on which this case hinges. In terms of public comment, we, there was a neighborhood meeting held in March regarding this project for the, all of the cases that go with this project. There are 15 meetings in residence in attendance. They had some various concerns about density, the potential impacts on surrounding residential, the residential environment, and traffic impacts, and all of these were discussed with the applicant at length during this review process. Then seven additional comments were received prior to the planning commission decision hearing, and then there's six comments that were expressed just in opposition to this project. I believe you've received some notice of some of these comments prior to this presentation. So the recommendation is to recommend approval of Z2204, to rezone to the same base zoning districts, the multifamily medium, multifamily low, with a planned area development overlay that accounts for the changes that have been requested by the applicant. With that, thank you for your time, Councilmembers and Mayor.
Thank you so much, Jevony. Anyone have any comments or questions? Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the additional information that you're sharing, and I think this type of explanation is really important as we start looking into the future. We're going, I don't consider this an infill project, but we're going to see a lot of that coming forward, and hopefully at our council retreat or one of them, we'll be having conversations about some expectations of some of the types of apartment complexes that come in. This particular project just caught my eye because the height request, so I was concerned that that was going to be adding additional units, so knowing that helps me in making this decision. I'm assuming that if we were to approve this tonight, that that additional open space is part of that approval tonight, and we don't have to be negotiating that at the next stage. Is that correct?
Correct. Councilmember Tilke, the open space requirement is what you'll be making a decision about this evening. The actual specifics of the open space design is handled by planning commission through the design review process, which just started with the town, actually just the other day.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation.
Would the applicant like to share?
Yes.
Thank you. I was thinking to myself, where's Reese Anderson? You are Reese Anderson.
I, and you, I'm a big, easy target to spot.
Okay, just introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Reese Anderson, and for your record, my address is 1744 South Val Vista, and I fully recognize that I am standing in the way of you in a World Series game, a very exciting series. But the staff have given you an excellent report. I have a detailed presentation that I don't think I need to go through at all unless anybody has specific questions, but this is really the most appropriate place, perfect place to do what we've done here and accomplish all the goals. And to Councilmember Tilke, yes, you're voting on just those three buildings, but the conditions, if you look at Condition J, that locks in everything to the open space, so I won't belabor it. We're here to answer questions. Mike Crone from the Frankel families here, all of us are available if you need it, but we would urge your support here. We've done a lot of neighborhood outreach with key leaders from Morrison Ranch. As you can see, they're, they're supportive. They actually gave me permission to say they're supportive, so that's what we're here for. I urge your support.
Thanks, Reese. Any comments or questions for Mr. Anderson? Well, that's the best you can get right there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and motion, and our motion. Anyone?
Mayor, move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, I got one from the send. Scott and Scott, so motion by Councilmember September, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Another Mr. Anderson. Moving on to our administrative items on our agenda, we've already handled item 20, so we'll move to 21. Council administration item, consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the fourth quarter of FY 2022 and the first quarter of FY 2023. Kelly, do you need to say a few words or, do you need a motion? Or you just, yes, okay. Thank you. I can never remember on these. I apologize. We don't, we only do them once a quarter, and I forget. Does anyone have any questions for Kelly, or would someone like to make a motion to accept this report?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept it, and just to note that we did receive a copy of this in our packet.
Yes, thank you. Second. Motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Kaproski. Please vote. Motion passes six to one with Councilmember Hendricks dissenting. Now on to item 22, boards, commissions, and committees. Any reports from council liaisons on any of your committees that you serve? Seeing none, next on our agenda, we will move to communications. Report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple items for you tonight. First, for the 31st year in a row, Gilbert has received their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, award from the GFOA for the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. It's an incredible amount of work that goes into that by our accounting division that makes it possible each year, so we congratulate them on the 31st year, consecutive year of winning that award, which is a very important financial document for the town. Next, on Sunday, October 23, the Gilbert Wellness Team coordinated workout with a hero. Members of Gilbert's Police and Fire Departments led workout and exercise training for members of the community at Desert Sky Park. Donations were also collected at this event for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is the first event of its kind, but hopefully not the last, and more to come. And we want to congratulate Albert Pineda in Development Services, who celebrated his 35th year with the Town of Gilbert in October, and he is second only in tenure to Benny Ruiz in Fire, who has 37 years with the Town of Gilbert. So congratulations, Albert, and we thank you for everything you do for our community. That's all.
And Benny's retiring.
He's almost retiring, and then we'll be rehiring him in a new role.
Yes.
So we're glad to have Benny still with us.
We can't lose Benny. That's, report from council on current events.
Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that it is now No Shave November. I got an early start because I really needed the extra help, so I cheated a little bit, but I just want to encourage all the men to grow a beard, and this is, of course, to bring awareness to men's health issues, and it's kind of an important issue for me. So everybody join me. Scott Anderson, Councilmember Anderson, maybe you could join. I see Councilmember Hendricks already got a head start. Our town attorney, Chris, he's, he's ahead of the game, so I just wanted to join everybody or ask everybody to join in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember September. Any more reports from council on current events? Okay, from, report from Mayor on current events, we have, and I know we have one more meeting before this actually takes place, but on Friday, November 18, we will be kicking off, sharing the Christmas spirit. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints will be hosting an event for the Light the World Arizona Giving Machines kickoff. The machines will be placed in Water Tower Park again. This year, the recipients of the donations will be Ascend, Midwest Food Bank, Gathering Humanity, Special Olympics Arizona, House of Refuge, and the African Girls Hope Foundation. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints handles every cost that goes into these machines, the machines themselves, they handle the volunteers that are out there all the time to help people use these machines. If you haven't had an opportunity to get out and use these machines one year in the past, please take an opportunity to get down there. It is the kind of the coolest thing that you can do to be able to give back to organizations, and they're, these, of all of these, five of these are local organizations that will be recipients of the donations this year, and then one that is, I don't know if it's nationwide or worldwide, I think it's worldwide. So this is an amazing opportunity. If you can't make it out on the 18th for the event, please stop by to see these. They will be there in place till at least January 1. And that's all I have. We will, excuse me, we will adjourn this meeting, recess this meeting because we will be moving to an executive session. Thank you.